My name is Courtney Edwards, Wyndham, Maine. I'm just gonna read a book that I found in your high school library as of this morning. Jerome thrust his mildewed pitcher of a woman with blond hair over my book. She was naked, gagged, and tied to a chair. Straps were wound tightly around the base of her breasts, making them stick out like fleshy missiles. And her blue eyes were wide with pain and fear. "She looks like you," Jerome said, "except you don't have these yet." He touched the woman's estranged breasts and then my flat chest. As I reached for it, I noticed his penis was spilling from the split of his pajama pants, like a rotting banana. We played like that, him and I, and his dick hanging out. He averted my eyes until the TV show ended and it was time to go to bed. But it kept happening, and a few days after, my 12th birthday, he tried to kiss me. That girl was 11 years old at that time. Page 112. I opened my eyes in a boozy blur. I see his penis jutting from his shorts. He grabs it by the root and tells me to lick it. He says in his thick voice, pressing my head towards it, "I've heard of girls giggling about blowjobs in school, and it's something boyfriends require of you." A stare at Scott's penis, there's a pearl balanced at the tan tip, and it smells like liverwurst. Lick it like a lollipop, and he's begging me now, breathing hard. Excuse me. He was... The penis with his hands to get my attention. He was flopping it side to side. I closed my eyes, and I stuck out my tongue, and it touches the side of it. "Open your mouth," Scott says, and I do. And he puts it between my lips, and he grabs my hair, and he pulls my head up and down in a motion. A moment later, he groans, and something slimy spurts into my mouth. It tastes like pool water. I spit the slime onto my parents' white bed sheet. My summary of concerns here is pretty straightforward. It's black and white. This book is the 14th book that I have found in just the past 24 hours in your high school that involves not only incest, rape, molestation, and suicide, but also bestiality. Yes, that is in fact right. I found a book in your high school where a group of minor children are having sex with their household cat. I'll read it to you guys at the next meeting when I attend. The book that I read prior is called Jesus's Land. It is a memoir for adults. It is rated four out of five, and it states that it is not for minors. At the end of the warning on the back of this book-
Thank you very much, Ms. Edwards.
Hi, my name is April O'Shea. I'm from Wyndham. I will be restricting my comments to the book Gender Queer and other high school-age books. I believe this book is necessary and should be available. Like any adult, I read the book in question, the entire book. That's what you do when you don't have enough information on a subject, rather than parroting soundbites from news entertainment outlets. If you're a cisgender person, this book was not written for you. Gender is not a leftist social agenda, and it is more than a woke issue for LGBTQ youth. It is their biological reality. If you read the book, it explains that on page 201. These young people need as much support and information as they try to navigate a life that is already difficult enough without adults trying to legislate them out of existence. The Constitution guarantees all of us equal protection under the law. Every day, the LGBTQ community gets a little less of that protection. The slope starts out gradual: a banned book here, a "don't say gay" there. And then we drop off a cliff: let's ban drag performances in gender studies. And then we'll bottom out at the point where you have to pack up your family and move to another state because they may care for your gender kid a crime here in the United States. It's a true story. My family is going through this. So we need to hold the line. We need to do better, Wyndham. This is not Tennessee or Florida, nor is it 1930s Germany. We need to do better. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Kate Turpin. I'm a Wyndham resident and a WHS scholarship sponsor. Today, I'd like to speak about intent and how it doesn't mitigate from impact. Last year, I worked in an elementary school in Lewiston, and I overheard a staff member talking to a young child, probably second, third grade, about their sisters. This staff member said, "Well, aren't you gonna make the best husband one day?" insinuating they would marry a woman. This could have been a super cute comment, pretty harmless, but to a kid questioning if they like boys, or girls, or both, or neither, that has a greatly different impact. So does this public conversation about banning books highlighting alternative experiences of people's sexualities or genders. I sat here two weeks ago, and my community was called sick and a cause for the damnation of our children's souls. The intent for one to be protective has a devastating impact on another when it sounds this way. Targeting LGBTQ books has an impact. Comments made about educators being groomers has an impact. You can have good intent, but you must consider potential impacts. By taking one or 10 books out of our school libraries, you are impacting generations of children, both straight and queer. I implore you to explore all potential impacts of your decision, regardless of your intent. And I hope everyone here does the same. Because while I know the intent of many, not all, but many in this room, is to be protective, two weeks ago... Sorry. I know a lot of us trying to be protective. I just wonder how many of us were negatively impacted by the hateful words and opinions of my fellow community members. So as you listen to all these commentaries and as you make your decisions, just consider all potential impacts, some that might take time to consider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Salutations. My name is July Trombley. I am from North Wyndham. I'm coming to the school board meeting as a transgender girl of RSU 14 School, Wyndham Middle School. My parents have recently attended the first two of the school board meetings, and I am appalled and infuriated. Firstly, the censorship of library material. In my experience as a WMS student, I can walk into the middle school library and find books containing sex scenes. Such sex scenes are heterosexual, yet they're not being brought up to the sport to be banned. Whilst novels with even lightly sexually explicit content that is homosexual or involves characters who are LGBTQ have been repeatedly brought to attention to be banned, some believe in containing sexually explicit content once they're average, acknowledging the existence of queer people. I am seeing this happening until that not only in Wyndham, but nationwide, that it is targeted towards us, and it makes me feel heavily infuriated. I would like to turn my attention to my experience and how this affects me. LGBTQ people are a very targeted and sensitive minority, specifically those on the transgender spectrum. Nationwide statistics show that nearly two-thirds of transgender youth have seriously considered or attempted to commit suicide or harm themselves. I walk into my school and am stared at, murmured over, targeted, the butt of jokes, surrounded and asked invasive personal questions. To emphasize, I've been so harassed in my own school that I meet with the principals every week at a scheduled time just to keep it under control. I read in the news places across the country censoring content about us trying to silence us, and now I just came to where I live, Wyndham, and it makes me feel sick. Feel sick to wake up and go to school and be harassed. Feel sick to read the news how much you and your counterparts are being targeted. Feel sick to see how many of us suffer from mental health crises. Feel sick to have your parents come home from a school board meeting and find out that people attending, after hearing how much LGBTQ+ youth are suffering from suicide and self-harm, and suggest that maybe we should just kill ourselves. It feels sickening to hear that grown adults around town residents believe that my life has no worth, and maybe I should just take it away. I've struggled with suicide and self-harm since I was 11 years old, and a grown adult is willing to say out loud that maybe I should just kill myself. It's sick. It's disgraceful and horrifying. We're children. I'm a 13-year-old kid who likes walks, science, and jazz, and vintage technology. I'm not a sexual predator. Heck, I'm scared to use a public bathroom because of cisgender people harassing and rostracing me. I would never do something sexually deviant because I hate the sexual reproductive organs I was born with. I'm one of the demographics most likely to be a victim of sexual violence. I feel sick to live my life and be alienated and silenced and harassed, disrespected, to have to fight to be treated as a human being. Think about how this affects kids like me, who are already so sensitive and targeted to be silenced and treated anonymously like criminals. Don't let other people silence our stories, our existence, our lines of hope, and our inspirations. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Mary Trombley, mother of that child, Wyndham resident parent and staff member. I need to address some of the comments I heard at the last meeting. You are right, this is about the children. We do need to protect children, but not from books, not from pictures, and not from teachers. We need to protect them from guilt over their natural curiosity, from the idea that sex is bad, and teens are wrong or immoral to think about it, or heck, even read a book where the characters think about it, or do it. We need to protect the kids who feel different and are questioning who they are from the bullies who tell them every day they are disgusting, unwelcome, and should disappear. We need to protect our children's mental health from the open hatred and ignorance now on display. If you are saying "I love everyone" and support queer people, but then you sit within cheer for the folks who are lying about the groomers, the predators, how the pride flag was a hate symbol, how trans people expose themselves in bathrooms, your actions are speaking louder than your words, and you are on the side of hate. The ones who need safe spaces and protection are not the cisgender heterosexual ones. When you sign your child up for summer camp, I want you to think, do you have to sign a non-disclosure form regarding the location of that camp because it's unsafe for the public to know where your trans child will be in the summer? Do you spend weeknights on alert to suicidal ideation because your kid heard that adults in their hometown wished they would kill themselves at a public meeting? Do you wonder if you need to install more home security systems because a parent who has been in this room threatened to kill a family member? I ask you to consider this: who are you cheering with? Who and what are we protecting our children from? And finally, to address the books being challenged, no one is making the kids check out and read these books, except for some of the parents in this room demanding their removal. Personally, I think kids in middle and high school will be fine reading these books if they wanted to. To me, there is nothing wrong about teenage characters grappling with sexual identities or grappling with past abuse. In fact, I believe access to queer identity stories can be life-saving for some children. Some people here don't agree with me, and that's okay. We can agree to parent differently. But what we are fighting for is different. Some people are here are fighting to remove books that they don't like. I am fighting for respect, inclusion, and my child's life.
Thank you.
Hi, members of the board. My name is Crystal Ash Cuthbert. I live here in Wyndham. I wanted to share two thoughts with you this evening. At last week's board meeting, several members of our community wondered how they could possibly object to a particular book if they didn't know what books would be part of the curriculum and/or available to their child. In policy IBM Teaching About Controversial Issues, it clearly states that students or their parents or legal guardians who object to particular topics based on sincerely held religious, moral, or philosophical beliefs may request an accommodation in accordance with board policy IMB. This policy would allow individuals who object to particular books or topics to request those accommodations for their own child. An accommodation in many schools looks like reading a different book, not being allowed to check out particular materials from the school library. It is not necessary to remove a child from public education to keep them away from topics that a parent doesn't believe is appropriate. They nearly need to make their own personal wishes known to the school their child attends. For those parents who object, feel free to use the options available to you through the school board policies. Trying to ban books for every student of Wyndham, including my child, isn't acceptable to me. Many students need those books with controversial topics. They build understanding, and they build empathy, showing differences in how people think, who they love, and what they believe is the foundation to accepting others for who they truly are. So board members, please continue to follow your established policies because they are fair and just, and allow every individual parent to make the choice for their child. I want my daughter to have the option to read books that develop her thinking, her kindness toward others, and compassion for those who are different than her. The second thought I wanted to share was that the wonderful individuals who choose to dedicate their lives to educating our children are not groomers. They are not trying to indoctrinate, exploit, or turn any child against their parent. They have chosen a thankless profession that exists solely for the purpose of creating intelligent children that feel accepted for exactly who they are. Educator bashing in this town has got to stop. The goal of public education is to prepare our community's children for the world that someday they will become leaders of. And the world that they will enter is full of diverse, unique individuals and cultures that they need a more thorough understanding of. Our schools and the people who work in them should reflect the world that they will be entering.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board and community. My name is Ashlyn Cuthbert, and I am here as an eighth grader who has attended Wyndham Schools my entire life. The books that have been cited by members of our community help people for so many reasons. These books are resources for students who are confused, curious, feeling alone, and/or struggling with their identity. These fictional books cover nonfiction topics that are happening every day. Our students are possibly going through these things all of the time, and these books help them feel like they're not alone, because they're not. I remember when I was going through one of the worst times of my life. One of the things that got me out was a book that taught me that I wasn't alone, that others were going through the same thing that I was. That book helped me learn how to defend myself and help others. Not only do these books help students in similar situations, but it helps other people who aren't in that specific minority to understand what it's like to be in other people's shoes. In our school system, we are often taught compassion, and these books encourage this. When reading another person's story, we start to understand and consider what other people may be going through. Parents and students completely and understandably have the right to stop reading or to stop their child from reading a book that they don't feel comfortable with. But you cannot prevent other people who need that book from reading it. I beg of the board that they not deny a child's right to something that might change their life for the better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Colin Damon, Wyndham. I believe the reason why everyone is here is because they care about their children's educations and their well-being. I appreciate. I live in a community where people's values are in the right place. However, this books-in-the-library issue is an example of yet another divide in the fabric of our society along partisan lines. I believe this is about more than what books are allowed in the library. This is just a reason to bash and damage public education as a whole. School is supposed to be a place of community, where families of all different backgrounds in the community can come together, and that is being lost. Some of the rhetoric I have been hearing about teachers labeling them as groomers, for instance, is dangerous and irresponsible. I personally choose to trust our teachers rather than view them with suspicion. People become teachers because they're passionate about helping students learn and grow, not because of some malevolent agenda. Come on, who would become a teacher for the salary? We cannot continue to generalize the other side. We cannot continue to dehumanize those that do not agree with our political beliefs. We cannot continue to assume the worst in each other. I believe in this country, we are on a slippery slope to real violence, and the us versus them must stop. Finally, the porn is on the phones and the internet, not in the books.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Yuen O'Shea, and I am from here in Wyndham. So as we all know, there has been a movement to ban books that display topics, some books, pertaining to homosexuality and other same-sex relationships. I'll be talking specifically about the book featured in our high school library, Gender Queer. I fully object to the banning of this book. All of us students at the high school have to deal with a decision you guys make. And normally, I'd be perfectly okay with this, since it happens all the time, but this is the first time in my life that I feel like one of these decisions is going to be negative in every possible way, and I actually have the words to speak about it. Or against it, in this case. I didn't know this book existed at all until the possible banning, or but the possible banning, made me want to read it so I can be aware of what I was talking about and supporting. And now I read it, man, am I glad I did. I say this because I feel that putting this book in our high school, where students are at a time where they're going to start questioning who they like, how they feel, and what they are, would be nothing short of beneficial to them. If a young teen is going through this and they're too scared to tell their parents because if I didn't have such a loving and accepting mother, I would be too, and they read this book, they can not only understand what they're feeling, but also that they aren't alone. What I feel is happening here is that people who aren't in high school anymore are wanting this banned because they don't like it, even though it doesn't affect them. Even if they're scared that their child reading Gender Queer will make them gay, it doesn't matter because that's not how being gay works. If their kid starts mimicking behaviors that they think is gay, it's not some life or relationship-ruining event, and there's probably another reason to explain their behavior other than the book said so. Some of your kids might be LGBTQ themselves. Even if they were, they might try to avoid telling you at all costs because they're terrified it'll make you hate them, or it'll ruin your relationship with them in some other way. Now take this hypothetical kid and put him in a scenario where this book does happen to be banned. How would that make them feel? How would they perceive that action? Worst-case scenario, that'll probably make them feel like they can't come out to anybody at all, with some of their friends being the only exception. They'll have to act like somebody they aren't just to avoid the fear of facing judgment or rejection. A bit of an overexaggeration, maybe, but that's exactly how I would feel. And the fact that it could make someone feel that way should be all the explanation I need to give. Before I go, I would like to conclude with one more overall statement: think about your kids. No, don't just project your own thoughts onto us and pretend you know how we feel. It'll be hard, probably impossible, for some people, and that's okay, because we don't know how you feel either. Rely on communication. Consider how we feel about this, and then form your opinion based on that. Think about what banning this book can mean for us down the line. It didn't help me much right now, but books like these can help other kids a lot, especially if there are more stories like these out there in the future. Whatever you do-
Thank you very much.
-just show them what-
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Good evening, board and Wyndham community members. My name is Louisa Ledd from Wyndham. And the first thing I want to lead off with is to remind our community members that Main Statute Title V, Part 12, Chapter 337A, Protection from Harassment, Subsection 4651, defines harassment as three or more acts of intimidation, and such the infringement of another person's First Amendment right. The district also has a policy, J.I.C.K.-E1, under which Line A-3 prohibits the harassment and bullying of others, so much so that it impacts the orderly operations of schools. Having seen some comments on the Facebook pages, I would encourage those who seek to silence others to stop because they are in direct violation of the law. This is the first thing. Second thing is that, after doing a bit of research on the Association of American Librarians Association, I came across books like Lord of the Rings, Call of the Wild, One Flew Over the Cuckoo's Nest, Great Gatsby, Catcher in the Rye, Grapes of Wrath, To Kill a Mockingbird, Color Purple, Lord of the Flies. I can go on. I have a list here, and I can share it with all of you. These are books that have, over the past 30 years, been proposed to be banned on a variety of issues. Another such is Blood and Chocolate. 2002 was on the chopping block for sexual content. Having read that book, it's less than Twilight. And, oh wait, Twilight's on this list, too, as is Goosebumps. Oh, wait, Harry Potter, Captain Underpants, as well. So when people speak out saying that, "Oh, a book needs to be banned," I disagree with it. Check what you're saying, what you're projecting yourself as a community member to these young We are adults. We stand by that motto right there: success for all. There is no asterisk, there is no apostrophe. It is all period, regardless of orientation, identity, race-
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Angie Boatman. I am a transgender and gay student at WHS. As I know you are aware, recently, there has been a heated controversy around the book Gender Queer by Maya Kababi in our school, specifically around its pornographic content. Many parents at this meeting are trying to ban the book in our schools, hence taking away an essential piece of literature and content that many students can see themselves reflected in, which to a trans or gay teen is critical to mental and social health. The claims against this book are unfounded and out of proportion, and removing the book from the library would only perpetuate the waves of hatred towards and the erasure of the already vulnerable portion of our student body at WHS. To address the concern of pornographic material, I would like to make two points. The first point being that the actual definition of pornography is printed or visual material containing the explicit description or display of sexual organs intended to stimulate erotic rather than aesthetic or emotional feelings. I put emphasis on the last part of the definition because intention is very important, and the intention of the explicit scenes in Gender Queer is not to stimulate erotic feelings, but merely to depict real life and the real-life experience of LGBTQIA+ teens. My second point is, no child is going to seek a book out if they want to find pornography, especially not Gender Queer. Gender Queer is an educational memoir about LGBTQIA+ topics, not smut or pornography. Another argument that has been made is keeping the book in schools is a violation of parental rights. However, this is an illogical argument. While it is the right of a parent to decide whether or not their child reads a book or is exposed to different topics, banning this book would be a violation of parental rights for parents who want their children to have access to this book. It is your right to tell your child not to read a book. It is not your right to make it so that other children won't be able to either. This book is not being taught as part of the curriculum. It is not being pushed by teachers. It is merely an option in the library for students who might be interested. Speaking from my own experiences and the shared experiences of my peers, having representation in books and media is extremely important. I read the book Gender Queer in late 2020, which was during a time when I was discovering a lot about myself and trying to figure out who I was. Reading books like Gender Queer and Nick and Charlie and seeing LGBTQIA+ representation in TV and media is essential to me being able to accept myself, and without them, I would probably still be living in self-hatred for something that cannot be controlled or changed. Representation of all cultures and experiences needs to be kept in schools for the good of all students. Banning this book would be taking away an important piece of educational literature, and that is never okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Scott McDonald, I'm from Wyndham. It kind of bothers me that if you're against this, it is pornography, even if it's cartoon form, the story's kind of saying rape's okay, not rape, but raping your incest is okay. There's way too much there for major, you know, I don't know. If I gave these books to your kid, that would be giving your kid pornography, and for some reason, if it's educational, then that's okay. LD123 would change that, and it would make it that the school would have to stand by the same laws that the rest of us do. I'm not against whatever you want to do. I'm good with that. I'll leave you alone, you leave me alone. That's not what we're talking about here. Just because I don't- Just because I don't want kids, little kids, seeing graphic pornography, because that is what it is, that's what it would be if I gave it to some kid, they don't need to see it. It's not going to help them, it's not going to help, what, they don't know how to do it? Then maybe they're not, whatever the book's about, if they don't know how to do that. These things, you don't need an illustration of how to perform these acts. It's really not a place, the schools, I can't believe I have to say this, but the school is not a place for these books. If they want these books, perhaps they should get them somewhere else. But we get them out. We had an eleven-year-old reading a book that they couldn't play on the news because it was illegal. That's because they know kids are reading, are watching the news. It's a pretty easy thing to say. These books, we're not banning any books, nobody's called to ban any books, we called to get them out of the library, the school library. I don't understand how anybody would, I mean, how can you sit there and put some parent down that's concerned about what their kids are reading and say, "Oh, you're anti-this and anti-that"? I haven't seen anybody get up here and say that. They're anti-pornography in a school. That's what it is. Thank you very much.
Anyone standing up, speaking against any of us or our efforts, have you actually looked at the content we're finding? It's not against anybody, it's not against LGBTQ. If you look at it, it is not that. So I hope that everybody can listen to what I'm going to say, not in the context of being against anybody. Here is some of the content for minors, thirteen to seventeen, some eleven- and twelve-year-olds in the library. Degrading profanity, incest, rape, bestiality, suicide, sodomy, murder, porn culture, group masturbation, kinks and sexual fantasies, use of sex toys, casual sex acts, suggestion of porn sites and books, pedophilia. Not all books will be removed, but all books with this content flagged should be read in full, and pro and con reviews considered, age appropriateness in reviews to ensure it's overall appropriate before it's added to a school, just in school. If your five-year-old wants to be Bob the Builder, you don't leave him in a workshop with a jigsaw and a power drill, right? The dangers to an immature mind of carrying too heavy a burden is not seen like a bleeding cut might be. But we can guess, depression, anxiety, demoralization, and hopelessness. Not saying some people can't benefit from it. I feel a parent and a family, or other trusted adults, not in school, can help kids find those sources. It's time to be discerning with our school sources in the library. As you revisit Policy I J J, I ask you to give attention to File Code B B A, Board of Directors, Powers and Duties. You're responsible for the development of policy as guides administrative action and for employing the superintendent to implement its policies. Policy I J J is not achieving this requirement, as made apparent by the removal this week of the book Let's Talk About It by the High School Librarian. This board is obliged to do your job to make Chris do his job in addressing administrative procedures to improve book selection. I'd like to request that you exhaust all policy avenues to address this issue. File Code B F, Policy Development by the Board of Directors. The board will welcome suggestions for ongoing policy development. File Code B E, Board of Directors Meeting, Workshop Meetings. The board at its discretion may schedule additional workshops and other meetings to discuss a particular subject or proposal, or to gather input from staff, community, or other groups. Three, File Code B D F, Board Advisory Committees. You could join community members of all points of view together to encourage discourse on all points of view to present back to the board. This would be a show of good faith, Kate, as you revisit I J J in assessing this genuine problem that until recently was unknown to us. We understand policies written by the subcommittee, but we do have suggestions we expect to be considered according to policy in the context of this current citizen concern. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Helen May from Wyndham. I'm going to scrap my remarks, just to point out that it's very interesting that with all of the talk of codes and definitions and pornography, that none of this was an issue before the school board, up until the wave of transgender panic that's been being organized around the nation started making its way through the school boards in this state as well. Not a whole lot of concern up until then. My trans child happened to speak here a couple of weeks ago, and for all of the talk of this not being an attack against folks who are transgender or LGBTQIA, when talking about the fact that trans children have a higher rate of suicide without proper supports, and ways that they can find ways to identify their own stories, someone said, when talking about suicide, "Why don't you?" And in these folks, Facebook groups on The Wire, on all of the talk that they've been doing, on Fox News and whatnot, they are creating a rhetoric of hate. They're talking about people being groomers, they're saying that, you know, folks are perversions, there's a whole lot of horrible talk. So I think that it's a fig leaf to say that this is not just about gender. And I would like to read a short passage, if I may, from Gender Queer. "As I pondered a pronoun change, I began to think of gender less as a scale and more of a landscape. Some people are born in the mountains, while others are born by the sea. Some people are happy to live in the place they were born, while others must make a journey to reach the climate in which they can flourish and grow. Between the oceans and the mountains is a wild forest. That is where I want to make my home." My child, the other kids who've gotten up to speak here, the folks who support them, they want them to be able to grow and live out their lives peacefully, where they can have their lives be as much a part of the mainstream and just live. They just want to live. And that doesn't seem like too much to ask, as well as the fact that in a plural society, we should be able to have books in our libraries with which we do not agree. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Gracie Levitt, and my pronouns are she/her. I live in Raymond, the traditional land of the Wabanaki Confederacy. I am the parent of a child set to enter the R S U in the next school year, and I appreciate that many before me have come to speak about their intentions to protect her and all the district's children, even if we're split about how to accomplish that. I also appreciate that people are sharing their differing perspectives, as our democracy is healthiest in its plurality. Something else, I believe, can support the health of a democracy, and indeed, any society, is for people to continue to work toward deeper and more nuanced understandings of themselves, each other, and the world's possibilities. Ensuring our schools make space for books that reflect the world in which we live, that speak to our nation's history with candor, and that seek to counter the hate and harm our young people too often face today, can support, in addition to their own senses of self, safety, and possibility, a vital democracy fueled by an awareness of the realities of our world by contemplation, compassion, and empathy. Indeed, not knowing myself has sometimes been an obstacle to my own participation in democratic processes like this one. And I am grateful that while much further work must be done, books that represent the voices and experiences of LGBTQ plus youth, BIPOC youth, people with disabilities, survivors, and people of all historically marginalized communities may yet be more and more accessible to those who choose to read and think about them. Some folks who might otherwise defend such works more broadly have criticized specific books such as Gender Queer as examples of pornography. But imagery and words alone do not constitute porn, which specifically intends titillation and often leverages power. Meanwhile, books that intend to be instruments of representation and reflection often seek to correct powers too long imbalanced. I am here to help hold the space that has already been made for these works of literature and to help it grow. Experiences like those reflected in the books Gender Queer have always existed, but these books have not always been published and made available to the public. It's taken far too long to achieve the amount of representation we currently have, and while many of us seek more, we're certainly not going back, because no one is free until we all are.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Hi, my name is Mike Trombley. I have a statement to read, but first, I just want to say one thing. If my five-year-old wants to be Bob the Builder, it's true, I shouldn't put them in a workshop. But I should give them a book, because books are safe. At the previous two school board meetings, I've listened to several parents use standardized test scores as a reason to ban inclusive books from the library. This accusation would be laughable if it were not such a colossal waste of time. We're barely out of a three-year, once-in-a-lifetime global pandemic in which millions died. Everyone's life has been upended in some way. Perhaps that has more to do with the drop in test scores than a few books in the library that aren't even part of the school curriculum. I'm going to say that again, they're not part of the school curriculum. The testing trends are not unique to R S U 14, and so it makes zero sense to place any blame on the hard-working teachers of this community. What also makes zero sense is the accusation that our schools aren't focusing enough on the subjects of reading, writing, and math. My kids bring home math and language arts work almost every day. Those topics dominate parent-teacher conferences, they're all over their progress reports. So I have total confidence in my kids' teachers, and I thank them for their tireless work. Listen, we've all heard the corny phrase, "You can lead a horse to water, but you can't make a drink." Teachers work eight, ten, twelve-hour days. They do their best to meet each student where they are, but they can't force students to listen to them. They can't snap their fingers and make students learn. The student-teacher relationship is founded on trust. Students trust that their teachers are there to help them. But when a parent spreads rumors and lies about their teachers, kids hear it, and that trust is broken. This isn't an exaggeration, it's not hypothetical, it's happening in our towns. If you participate in that kind of fear mongering, if you spread those lies, you have no reason to complain about test scores. Try something else. Try treating all kids with kindness, regardless of how they look, regardless of what pronouns they use, regardless of what books they have in their backpack. Try trusting teachers, try supporting them, try asking them what you can do to help, try letting them do their jobs without constant interference and harassment. Try something else.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tommy McDonald, I'm from Wyndham. None of these parents are saying to ban the books, they're saying they want them out of the libraries, in school, library schools, school libraries, whatever. You can have them at the public libraries, you can go to a bookstore and buy them, they don't want kids reading the books. Because, well, do you want your kids watching someone have intercourse? No, you don't. It's wrong. It shouldn't be in the schools, and you should take it out.
Anyone else?
Adam Zajak, Wyndham resident. I've addressed the school board several times right here, but tonight...
Sir, you're...
I want to address the public, and I want to look at everybody when I just...
CJ, I'm turning off the mic. This is comment to the board.
Tell the board what you want.
You can stuck that three minutes.
We'll give you your time.
Yeah. So, I would like to address everybody in here, all the parents and the kids here. This has nothing to do with anybody being anti-LGBTQ. Nothing, at all. This has to do with having sexually explicit materials that are not appropriate for children and minors. A lot of these books are eighteen and up. So, again, this is not anti-LGBTQ. People keep mentioning Gender Queer, but just so you know, we have like fourteen books that we have been fighting and putting placement of the I J J, whatever it is. And we've met with librarians, the superintendents, everybody. Now, I really want to know who is okay with having bestiality in our schools?
I'm going to turn off the mic.
Turn it off.
Okay. You ready? Are you ready? It is a...
Turn it, thank you. God, what is the deal? Why is it not okay for me to look at my community that is standing here and concerned?
Are you ready to comment?
I'm not commenting, I'm speaking. This is public speak right now. Okay.
We're willing to listen.
Okay. So, why is it okay for you guys to have literature in the school where a girl is taking her cat's tail and putting it in her pussy? That is not okay. And I am not afraid to say it right now, because it's all adults in here, okay? You're teaching kids or allowing kids to learn how to use butt plugs. You're allowing kids to learn how to suck cock. And they're in the library! You know what? Cut it out. Cut it out. Stop. Now, I have a real problem with what you guys are doing and what the people in this audience are saying, because this is illegal. This is pornography in our kids' school. A hundred yards away from this school is the public library. You know what? If you want your kids to have it and you can't afford to put these books in your child's lap at home, then go to the public library. It's free, and everybody is allowed to go there. Now, another thing I want to say is, I went to Sherman's with my son, because you know what we decided to do? We decided to buy books that are appropriate for the kids in this school. And I got one for the high school, one for the middle school, and one for the elementary school. Now, I had a really hard time finding them at Sherman's, because it was all, man, I got to say, it was a lot of rainbow flags in there. Now, I want books that are teaching my kids to succeed. I want you guys to actually try and teach these kids math, English, science, how to be successful. You know what? We don't need any flags other than that one right there in our school. American flag. We don't need BLM flags or signs, we don't need LGBTQ, we need...
I'm his up, sir.
Academics. That is what needs to be taught to our children.
Thank you.
And I review them, and they are age-appropriate.
My name's, is the mic on? Oh, thank you. My name's Noel Teak, and I have two kids in the Wyndham Public Schools, and I am also Wyndham resident. When I was young, there were plenty of kids who were dealing with sexual assault. There were plenty of kids who were transgender, who were queer, who were gay, who had difficult pasts, who were dealing with violence in their home. They did not have those books. We all knew them, because I may not have grown up in Wyndham, but it happens in every Books are a way for them to have their stories told, for them to have validity, to understand what's happening to them, to understand if something is right or wrong. It might be difficult, especially as adults, to read these stories and to see kids in them, because they're difficult topics. And it became, it can be reactionary. It doesn't mean it doesn't happen, it doesn't mean they don't need resources, and it doesn't mean that they should be shut out. Any book in the library that any parent here doesn't want their child to read can now, they can go through the proper channels and have their kid exempt. It is their choice, but for those kids who need those books, in order to grow up to be functional... be functional adults, because they are dealing with those issues, it is life-saving, and it is essential. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Nicole Varney, and I'm a Wyndham resident. I didn't come here with a speech tonight, I have a sick kiddo at home, and I would much rather be at home with him, taking care of him, but as a parent, I have to protect him from he's sick as well as when he is healthy. Again, I said it last time, people need to stop with the feelings and start with the logic. What it comes down to is this stuff not just specific to the LGBT community, I have nothing against that. What I have against is the stuff in school, just like Adams has said many times, every topic that is in those books that is not okay for kids to read should not be in school, period. I feel like we are treating children like adults and adults like children, and we have it completely backwards. I have, that's all I have to say. I'm going to continue coming, I'm going to continue fighting. I wish Ms. Butler was here tonight, because two weeks ago, when I was at the school board meeting, she went and spoke to a parent that was sitting in front of me, introduced herself, said thank you very much for the back-and-forth with emails, except for I have been emailing every member of this school board numerous times, and I have gotten not one single response. Not one single response. I have issued my concerns, I have asked numerous questions numerous times, and not one single email. So hearing her go up to that parent and thanking him for the emails and the topics and stuff really, really bothered me. You guys are supposed to be for everybody and every parent, and not just for the ones that are going with the agenda that you agree with. All right? I'll see you again next week.
Hi, my name is Kelly Ruby, and I have three children who attend Wyndham Schools, eighth grade, fourth grade, and entering kindergarten in the fall. I am first and foremost a mother, and I will always advocate for my children. I am also a teacher, and I want to specifically express my heartfelt gratitude and appreciation to all of the teachers we have worked with over the past eight years. They have truly made a difference in our kids' lives, and I know firsthand how hard it can be working on the front line. The past couple of years have proven to be very difficult for my now thirteen-year-old daughter, and she has given me permission to read two pieces she has written to illustrate how hard it is, all ready to be a teenager who is not only experiencing changing hormones, questioning identity, and wondering how she fits in, but also how having issues of sexualization being shoved in her face day in and day out can be equally as detrimental to her mental health. The first one's called "Caving In." "I feel as though I don't fit in, and my stomach's starting to churn and spin. My mama tells me not to worry about what people think about me. I tried my hardest, but I caved in, and now everyone's looking at me. He, him, he, no, I'm a she, but they all still looking at me. And now I feel as though I have to change my personality. Maybe if I changed the way I look, I might get a guy, and maybe then I might not feel like something's not quite right inside. I told my friend I wanted to kill myself, but maybe, just maybe, I just might need some help." "The ADHD doesn't help, because it means I'm not like everyone else. My teacher will send me out of the class because I'm acting up and stirring the mass. Bullying sucks, bullying sucks. You ain't know what I've been through. I punched a kid on the bus in her face, it was a bloody bust. People don't realize that a couple days before, her and her friends ganged up on me and stole all my stuff. A kid in my class will yell, 'Shut up, trans,' but I'll just stare at the wall and not bother to do my work at all." And the second piece is called "Lonely." "I'm lonely, sometimes I wonder if I'm even visible. No one can see me, they don't know how I feel. I'm lonely, I'm hurt. Does anyone know my worth? I'm lonely. Walking to the bathroom, found the scissors, one, two, three, falling, drip, drip, drip. Pretend I didn't do anything, I'm lonely. Cover up my wound, I can't afford to be figured out. I'm lonely, I need help, I can't sleep, I don't want to eat, I'm lonely, I'm hurt, I don't have any worth." So, having just read this, you may be wondering what this young lady is really like. Let me tell you, she is intelligent, she gets great grades, she's athletic, she's sensitive, she's loving. She has always loved school, but now she says she does not want to be in Wyndham Schools any longer, she wants out, and I am asking the administration of the school board to make that right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Justin Wynott from Wyndham. I'm back before the board tonight to just point out the failures. Your continued bad policies, your reckless indecisiveness, and your complete disregard of the well-being of RSU 14's youth is a complete disgrace to the community. Bad policies of this board have aided to the crumbling of the mental health of students of RSU 14. Last month, a poll was released showing that one in three teenage girls had contemplated or attempted suicide. This is truly heartbreaking, yet in light of this, you continue to subject the children of RSU 14 to pornographic and sexualized content that is degrading the mental health and well-being of this community's children. The community has had enough, it's time for this board to do the right thing. Remove this disgusting detrimental material from our schools before the blood on your hands can never be washed clean.
My name is Doris Meehan, I'm from Wyndham. My support of the parents who are concerned about the hyper-sexualization and desensitization of violence being perpetrated on their children has made me even more aware of education shearing away from academics and into cultural indoctrination. It has also caused curiosity about why eliminating some materials is okay and not for others. Parents who are concerned must jump through hoops to remove books that contain raw, graphic, sometimes violent, and often pornographic descriptions and depictions of sexual activity, books that they rightfully consider inappropriate for young minds. Yet, within the last two years, last ten years, books by Dr. Seuss have disappeared from the earth, because someone somewhere imagined that his caricatures were insensitive depictions of racial or ethnic cultures. Seriously? I never once pictured a Dr. Seuss character as anything bordering on human. In 2016, another book, A Birthday Cake for George Washington, was pulled by scholastic publishers because it was deemed to gloss over the horrors of slavery. In neither of these instances, or... Were children being... In neither of these instances are many similar, where there are concern that Nazism was creeping into society. Also, in none of these incidents were children being hyper-sexualized and exposed to photos and vivid descriptions of sex and violence that were likely to damage their innocent mind and hearts, nor were they likely to traumatize some student who may have already been sexually abused. These parents have nothing in mind but the protection and very best interest of all children. I think the school system should try to cooperate and work with parents. It appears, instead of that, the system is following the legal advice it has been given, to silently listen and then ignore. I hope and pray that that's a misconception, but with one recent exception, it is how it appears.
Good evening, Board, Sherry Clark from Raymond. I wanted to tag on to that, and I wrote out something here, I probably won't reference it too much. Innocence. It's a word that we hear, but the children are supposed to live. They're supposed to live in the childlike innocence that we all, I hope that most of us here, did have. I'm not necessarily talking to the eighteen-year-olds here, you're an adult, but for our children, my grandchildren, we have nine grandchildren, four of them are currently residing and attending RSU 14. I want to give my grandchildren the same thing that our children got, and that I got, and that they got: innocence. You can't buy it, you can't take it back after it's been stolen, and it's being stolen from our children. Please don't let that happen.
Hi, Jennifer White from A Joyful Noise Christian Daycare and Learning Center. I just want to say that both of my kids attended RSU 14, and I can't speak highly enough about some of the teachers that we had, to be honest with you. We had some fantastic teachers. And I honestly say that, because I have these conversations with my kids, especially my daughter, and there were some great teachers. Now, have they always been perfect? No, there's actually been some mistakes with books. And I rated our movie, where at the end, there was a gun stuck in the mouth and pulled the trigger. We had no idea this was being shown, she was in fifth grade. Okay? So how did we handle it? We went to the teachers, we went to the principal, we had a good relationship, we talked through it. This has escalated to a point far beyond that. And my daughter actually got books at the library, recommended by the librarian, that she brought home, because she was such a gifted, talented reader. These books were far beyond anything that she should have been given. Okay? She brought them home, my husband read them, and he was appalled, and had a discussion with the librarian, the librarian said, "I am so sorry, I shouldn't have given those books, that book actually isn't supposed to be in the school, it's supposed to be in the high school. I'm sorry, I made a mistake, both times. I'm not throwing anybody under the bus, what I'm saying is, mistakes happen. It doesn't matter how involved you are as a parent, this isn't about being, about bad parenting, this isn't about not opting out your child. We did all those things. If they're still present in the library, there are loopholes. What I think needs to happen is there needs to be a better policy to address this. In the school board, I'm asking to adopt a policy, we can get rid of pornography in our schools, and sexually explicit materials that don't need to be in our schools. We have the public library right here, right here, they can walk over, take out a book, no problem. Mom and dad can buy it for them on Amazon if they wish. We don't need the stuff in our schools. And then think of the community partnerships. You have a lot of community partnerships, like myself, where you have kids that could come to my school, that could be out of middle school, that could bring stuff in the backpack, that could bring stuff home to their siblings. These are things that are not appropriate. This is not just about schools, and it certainly is not about the LGBTQ community at all. It really frustrates me, because I'll tell you right now, I mean, I have people in my family and friends groups from all colors, whatever you, whatever, all spectrums, okay? And it frustrates me that you come up here, and I'm hearing you, my heart breaks for some of the things I heard here tonight. This is not about that. This is about sexually inappropriate materials in our schools.
Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Stephen Apollatano from Wyndham, and it sounds like you have to define what illegal pornography is and what's acceptable. It's a tough position for you to be in, and as me, as a youth coach of seventeen years who brought any of that material with me at any of my practices or games, I'd be arrested by those gentlemen back there. So, a month ago, eleventh grader Knox read that book, went viral for a reason, it's very, very disturbing for a young child to be reading that. We're going to talk policy for a moment. Kate at Brick, you and I have been going back and forth a little on email, talking about policy as far as the IJJ with expediting material. And you said that the board follows policy, no exceptions. So my question is, do you always follow policies, or is it, or just when it's convenient? And I'm going to bring back, about a year or so ago, Jenny Butler, a board member, violated the multiple code of ethic guidelines, she posted on social media, and these are quoting her, "I find this very interesting," as she shared a right-wing extremist post that says, "The right-wing extremists are coming to the school board meetings and to get ready." She also shared pro-critical race theory, a critical race theory post, and also about white privilege. Was anything done as far as following the policies, or was I told that there was no teeth? On March 3rd, a year ago, former board member Scott McLean and Dr. Robin Frost and the public voiced their concerns about the removal process of explicit material. Chris Howell responded to the public and to the board, that Chris himself would make exceptions for expediting dangerous situations, though it was not written in the IJJ. Chris said he would expedite just before the board voted for the revision. Okay, and I asked you about it, and you said the minute said one thing, but I said the video said another thing. So if someone's not telling the truth, is it Chris about intervening, or is it you about, about your response saying, "No one can expedite"? Anybody can go to that video on the RSU 14 website. I know the librarian had pulled a book recently, and I praise her for doing that. Now, are these books dangerous? Are they dangerous enough? See, as you've been hearing, and I'll mention some again, "How to Have Sex With a Cat", molestation, incest, rape, theft, pornography, hyper-sexualizing minors, vulgarity, intense violence, underage drinking, drug use, and anti-religion. Now, all of you up there are either parents, grandparents, neighbors here in the Wyndham-Raymond area, that you either, you have students here, or you know somebody that does. Mr. Howell does not. The lawyers do not have anybody in this. You guys are stakeholders, just like all of us, we're asking you to take a stand and talk about that pornography is not acceptable in our library.
Good evening, Ken Clark. Again, last time I was up, I said, "Look, it's, think of the Michael Jordan analogy, it's got to be the shoes, it's got to be the porn." Definitely heard a lady read a part out of Gender Queer, very nice passage that was read. The issue is, the porn that goes on beyond it, it is harmful. You'd need to talk to people that have more education than anyone I've found in the school, and they will tell you the same thing, it's illegal for a reason. The CDC even said it was harmful. It's about the porn, folks, that's what we're upset about. Again, we all have the right to be who we are, feel who we are, and that one person that attacked, I did hear that comment too, and I was horrified by it, and I apologize on behalf of that person for what he might have, how he might have offended you. Where my anger lies, and a lot of our anger lies, is with the school, and the board, and the people that run it. We find out about this stuff, because we hear it from our kids. We hear there's the sickest stuff that Courtney read, how is that beneficial? And honestly, all you parents that have, are trans kids, how does that help them? It's harmful. Please, listen to us on that, we hear you, you got to hear us, that's all we're talking about, is the porn. Well, things are disgusting, sticking a cat's tail doesn't help anybody. I'm pissed, I'm pissed because we have to find out about it that way. So excuse me for being angry, but you're not going by what you should do, it's your responsibility to let the parents know. Then we do something, and we find out that boys can go in the girls' bathroom. I don't agree with that, okay? My daughter's going to see a dick for the first time in a stall because someone flashes it to her, she's eleven years old, not appropriate. And I'll be honest with you, folks, I don't think it's appropriate either for a male to go in the female bathroom, because you identify a certain way one day, I'm just being honest with you. There's a neutral bathroom, you can go in there. More than welcome to, it's just people aren't prepared for this stuff. And I talked to a teacher, one of the principals, and I said, "How come you haven't let parents know that parents, that the kids can go in the bathroom?" He says, "Well, we didn't want to make a big deal about it." Really? They tend, they send us a note, there's going to be a PJ movie, and let us know about that, but they decide, "Nah, we're not going to let the parents know," or send an email out that someone in the sixth grade was, could have another opposite sex in the bathroom. Grow up, people, seriously, it's bullshit, and that's why we're pissed. Our anger is naughty, you folks, it's here, and it's the porn. I just don't understand, I'm probably going to run out of time, but I just tried to run through my head in the hierarchy of needs where the power lies, and I had to come up with a maritime analogy, and I probably won't get through it, because my notes are everywhere, but if you think way back in time, and the Lloyds of London were founded, okay, it was an insurance company to ensure the safety of the vessel going across the sea. So picture RSU 14 as the vessel. We, everyone in this room, okay, are the mutual policy holders in that. The cargo is our kids, okay? The cargo is our kids, okay? So, now, all of a sudden, we got... and you folks on the board are in charge of the crew. The crew is made up of Chris Howell, who's the captain, and the other people on the boat, all right? So, say they're walking...
Thank you, sir.
Oh, man.
Hi, I'm Tom Boatman. I'm from Wyndham. I just was thinking about the one thing, a couple of years back, Nicole Maines up in Orno sued the town of Orno, the school system, because she wasn't provided with a bathroom at all, being a transgender youth. And she won that lawsuit, which is, to my understanding, why this bathroom policy is instated in Wyndham. So, that's the main Supreme Court's decision, not yours, but I really appreciate that you guys are following what the main Supreme Court determined. So, thank you very much, and thank you for sitting up there and letting us all have our say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Beth Hall from Wyndham. I hope nothing happens in the RSU 14 bathrooms, because that's going to be the publicity that the school's going to get. Sorry, that's how I feel. So, that's a little heckling. If there's a lot of students in this system that are having transgender difficulties and trying to figure out who they are, there's a lot of heterosexual people that are students that are having the same problems with their day-to-day hormones and growing, and I think we need to get rid of these books and have more counselors on board that are there for the kids daily, that they don't have to wait in line for help, that they're there for immediate emergency consultations, and support the kids in that matter. Get rid of the books and start having conversations. Kids don't need to learn this stuff from a book. They need support, they need to learn how to talk to somebody about their problems, and a book is still all by themselves. Reading this book, going by somebody else's opinion about how their journey was. Thank you. Thank you.
Sir, have you spoken before?
Uh, no, I haven't.
Okay.
Anyway, my name's Scott... Hold on, I haven't started yet. My name's Scott McDonald. I was curious, the four books that were brought up to you tonight, is there a possibility you could give me the titles of them? You, please? So, one of them is a sports book, which is good for our schools. One of them's a sports book, it's about soccer, and it looks like from the front page at least. That's good for our schools, I'd say. The Kite Runner, seemed like a pretty good book to me. Not part of the school system anymore. The Wild Robot seems like a normal school book that you could read for probably middle school to high school level. This last one is Thinking Fast and Slow by Condon, or Daniel Condon. Basically, people might get offended at what I might say, I'm not trying to be offensive. These books that were given to an eleven-year-old and given to these sixth graders, these kids haven't even hit puberty yet by eleven, and they don't even know what that is. And let them read sports books instead of have these sports books assigned out on the front of the book thing, or your little signs and everything. These need to be in the schools, and I mean, if I could say something to one person, if you guys want to believe this, maybe they might be. But we need people like the guy who was here, we need him in our school board, and I mean, I accept this book because this guy is pretty knowledgeable about everything he knows, and his son is too, which is eleven. And it's pretty sad considering it's a sexual book containing graphic, graphic stuff. I mean, just accept these books into the school board and have some common sense for what everybody has to say and these concerned parents, because what you accept, these kids, these parents aren't... were bringing books, because obviously this guy wants books. And just accept what the parents have to say. And I mean, they call... I'll be called a... a lot of things, but I'll say my name is Scott McDonald and I'm straight. There is... Gender queer is offensive to me because it's against my actual religion, technically, because you're not supposed to have sexual intercourse until you're married. And I mean, I hope everybody here has a great night, and please accept these... what people have... these parents are concerned for their kids.
Hello, my name is Rah Huff, and I am a resident of Raymond, and I have three children in the Raymond Schools. I have heard it said recently, that books are either mirrors or windows. Books that are windows show reader... show the reader something that is different than their immediate surrounding and personal experiences. It helps them to learn about the world outside their sphere, and it helps teach empathy and compassion for the people that are unlike them. In books that act as mirrors, you see people in places similar to yourself. It is important for everyone to have access to read and to read books that are both windows and mirrors. I was personally raised in a bubble, or an echo chamber, if you will, where I was indoctrinated to truly believe the hate and the bigotry spewed in this room week after week, and to believe that that was love. It has taken me many painful years to extricate myself from that cognitive dissonance, and to actually learn that our children, my husband and I's, are not merely extensions of ourselves like we were taught to believe, but individual human beings that are learning who they are. I would also like to point out that The Kite Runner, was that one of the books that you mentioned right there, was challenged many times because of its age-inappropriate material, sexually explicit content, and offensive language. Thank you.
Courtney Post-Vanderberg, Wyndham. I have two children in the school district. I am also a children's director at a church, and I would just like to thank the school board members and the community and the staff at Wyndham Schools all through RSU 14 for the one act that happened this past week where our students here, right at the high school, took first place. Thanks.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Rebecca Cole, Wyndham. I'd like to thank the members of the community who've demonstrated unwavering and genuine support for our staff and students. Your words and actions serve to bolster an incredibly disheartened school community, and you are so very appreciated. Thank you to my colleagues for continuing to show the compassion, commitment, and excellence that make me proud to be part of our staff. You endure untrue accusations, unwarranted harassment, and unfair criticism daily, all while caring for all of our learners. Thank you to our students, many of whom feel keenly the harm caused by the vitriol that divides our community. Every one of you deserves to come to our learning spaces and feel seen, heard, and valued, no matter your identifiers or circumstances. Every citizen has the right to express their questions, concerns, and ideas. They should be able to do so uninterrupted without fear of mockery, retribution, or threat. There are processes and procedures to address issues formally, and policies and statutes which govern those avenues, none of which are rooted in vengeance or violence. One statement from last week, among many that were similar, stood out to me in particular. Public schools have a problem. They have to cater to every class of student. Yes, we do, because every single student has the right to a free and fair public education in a safe, supportive environment. It is idealistic and unrealistic to ignore human realities such as hunger, trauma, fear, discrimination, health or cognitive challenges, to approach reading, writing, and arithmetic as if those realities did not exist. To engage in learning, students need us to see them as people, not problems. How heartbreaking those and many other words must have been to anyone experiencing any of those truths, to feel you aren't welcome in our public schools because you don't enjoy the same privilege as your peers? Your child or your family is seen as a problem because you need extra support? I think of my colleagues whose life's work is ensuring a quality experience for the young people with whom we spend the majority of our and their days, and I share their feelings of demoralization and disappointment that elitism and exclusion have brought to our community. Hate has no place here. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Victoria, I'm a senior. I am here today to speak for my friends who can't speak publicly without outing themselves, which is very dangerous for some of them. Firstly, I would like to recommend some other options to steer us away from this binary of keeping versus removing books. The first option is to set up a notification system that allows a notification to be sent home when a student checks out a book, so families can be informed of what their child is reading. Another option is to let families put restrictions on what their... on their student's account, preventing them from... their student from being allowed to check out certain books or any book that isn't needed for class. These options let parents protect their kids from books they deem as harmful without taking these books away from those who need them. I don't know how these options relate to like privacy laws and First Amendment stuff, but they're definitely worth looking into if we need to find a compromise. To continue on, I would like to point out again that this is in fact an attack on the queer community, even if it's unintentional. I know this because most of the challenge books, especially those that are causing so much commotion, are queer stories that have the same or even less mature content as books I had to read in school, like health sex ed textbooks and many of the English books in our curriculum. Why are people talking about books that just exist and nobody has to read them and not the books I had to read for school? I have no problem with these books, but I just hope that people can be consistent. And I hope that I'm not being naive when I say I fully believe the people that say they're not here to attack the queer community, but the reality is that we are being targeted, even if it's unintentional, and I encourage people to recognize that, and I will stand here and defend my community. With that established, you should also be aware that removing these books is in direct opposition to core value number one of the RSU 14's core beliefs: equity and inclusion. Specifically, one D, and I quote, "Create a community of professional and student leaders where all feel safe, valued, and achieved at high levels," end quote. Removing these books will encourage anti-LGBTQ plus bullying, causing us, the queer community, to feel more unsafe, and it will demonstrate that we are not valued by our administration, including yourselves. It is not the school's responsibility to risk violating the First Amendment and forsake their core values for families who don't trust their adolescents in a library. Students can access far more mature content on their school laptops, and we're worried about books in a library? At least the library prioritizes having material that is beneficial for students, including gender queer, as proven by the brave testaments of my peers that we heard here today. Thank you for your time, you all have given hours, twenty hours of your time and your sleep to listen to our community with admirable composure and professionalism. Have a lovely evening.
Thank you.